And I don't see any members of the public here to speak with us, am I correct in that assumption? No one's being a public member tonight, very good, so we'll move on. And I guess we'll do a quick approval, assuming that that can be quick of the minutes from the previous meeting, have you had a chance to look at those Sean?
I did, I didn't have any suggested edits, I need to go back to the charts here.
Uh-huh, okay. Okay, well they look good to me too, so I I will move their approval.
I second.
Okay, and then we'll vote on the approval of the last meeting, which is from eleven seventeen, and it's unanimous. And that allows us to move on to Cindy's report.
Good evening, everybody. Happy holidays, we're really close now, so that's great. Um, all right, so phase one, an update is um that the installation of the wall mounted whiteboards had been completed since our last meeting and Tetra Tech has reviewed those well, it does have some type of work to do on some of the corners and trim work and they're scheduling that for Friday or next week. So we hope to be done with them at our next report. Any questions or concerns on phase one at this point? The high school roof, at last meeting we had a sapped area on High C where we had roof drains being replaced that was incomplete, that work has now been completed. Um, the only work that is outstanding is a chimney infill in the boiler room. Um, we are hearing that structural steel subcontractor for all of our contractors, Raleigh is having difficulty manning the work they have on the books, so we understand that that is the issue, not the material but labor. Um, so we're continuing to keep in touch with the roofer to get that work scheduled as soon as possible. Punch list was conducted and those items are being or have been addressed, the warranty inspection has also been conducted and those items are being addressed, so we're um very close to being able to close out that roof project. Any questions on the high school roof?
Will we get a notice or some sort of celebration?
We won't have rain dripping on our head.
Fantastic, thanks.
Yeah.
Is that, I have a quick question, there's a whole lot of stuff piled up in front of the school, or there was last weekend, is that gone now, there were a lot of?
Like out front here?
Out in front, no, out in front, like sort of between the ITA building and.
It's nothing to do with the roof, it's actually picnic tables, it's a daily facilities issue, not a capital project issue.
Okay, I was curious about what those were, I didn't know if those were things that were being set back or something, they're not yours, never mind.
Yeah, I think they're tea, they're tables for the quad that it gets people together.
Okay.
Um, middle school temperature control upgrades for DeWitt and Boynton, the work is substantially complete, we're in process of balancing and conditioning of those systems, substantial completion inspections have been conducted for the general contractor as well as the electricians. The mechanical and the controls contractor inspections will occur once balancing and conditioning is completed. Uh, we have agreed to and will ensure that a meeting is held with Heather's group with the maintainers that oversee the temperature controls on a daily basis to ensure any comments they have of what they're seeing, some rate upgrades and the system's a bit put in place are incorporated into that inspection report after the contractors. Any questions on that? Seems to be better this winter, I would say, not had as many calls to say, you know, this isn't working or the contractor's doing anything, so I'm hopeful that means that things have improved with the project. Okay, then, phase two, Enfield, obviously no works occurred in the last period except uh, the district did have one of the um fuel oil boilers fail that had been five out of nine or five out of eight, so the fifth one failed anyway. Um, and the district purchased directly a temporary fuel oil fired boiler to get through the rest of the winter. Um, and we're going to cover the labor installation for that under the project uh, with the plumbing contractor that we currently have. Um, and so at the onset of summer work when we're going to demo all of that, uh, the thought is we're going to try to find somebody that might be able to use the fuel oil boiler uh, so that it isn't just trashed and potentially um maybe get some of that cost back for the district. Um, and it'll just be taken out as part of the contract and set aside if we know that we have a buyer for it.
The other ones, are they original to the building?
Uh, Chris, I'm sure they're original, but they're old.
Right, I think, I remember hearing nineteen sixty, something like that, but I don't know if that's.
I think the original part dates from the fifties, I want to say.
That would be a really long life, that would be pretty amazing.
Possible though, okay, it is possible.
And it is possible to find someone that may be able to use it or another organization company or maybe.
Right, or even, you know, the plumber that put it in, he may get his batch in touch with the vendor and they may take it back to his used unit or resell it, so we have some options there. Um, LACS, during this recording period, the toilet rooms uh have been turned over as we've talked about since September. We're still waiting on fire alarm equipment to be delivered, to be able to install. Uh, the lights have been delivered that we needed for the uh wall wash lights and using the stalls, however, we have several locations that they're going in, so they've been focusing on DeWitt and then they'll go to LACS when when um they finish at DeWitt first.
Quick question about LACS, have we heard more feedback or thoughts about the complaints of light pollution um for the outside space?
But not heard.
We were going to connect with the neighbors and um I'm sorry that we did not do that, but we haven't heard any follow-up yet.
Okay.
Um, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you may want to wait.
That's what I I actually was going to ask you about the additional lighting.
Okay.
So there are light poles that go along the um north parking lot, right, along the sidewalk? Um, and the electrician received those last week, he did confirm to me today that he does have them. He's just waiting for installation to see when their boot truck is available, so we're hoping and pushing them to try to get them in this break week. So you may want to wait since we're close to getting them done, just see if that exacerbates or embroasses.
And Chris had had some ideas, right, around shielding.
Yeah, I.
That's the only.
Get out there when it starts, which is kind of easy these days.
Like three.
Yeah, right, tomorrow, right, it's this whole.
Yeah.
And just let's see, like, where where does this person live, what is it that they're probably seeing, and then we can assess what the, what sort of mitigation?
In the light poles, we have a little bit more flexibility in terms of directing the light.
Yeah, so like, yeah, typical sort of what we call shoebox light pole, you can put some shields on it, I think there are other types of lighting out there, like ballers and things that emit light sort of in all directions, those might be a little more difficult, so I'll just have to see what the situation is.
So I can actually just tell folks to wait, we're we're on it, we're paying attention to it.
We're making a lot of lighting.
We don't want to do it almost in a in a method, right, exactly, we'd rather just wait till the end of construction and then move forward, yeah, thank you though for doing that follow-up.
Um, permanent doors have been delayed as well, originally we were told December, now it's middle of January from the um manufacturer, if that could slip again, that seems to be the um way that this has been going according to the supplier.
Those are the bathroom doors or those?
All wood, all wood doors.
Oh, okay.
So regardless of where they are, but this, that date in particular Jill is for LACS.
Okay.
Um, also, we did begin work at the best bill for the black box on the south side, ran into a pipe, has to be rerouted. Um, and we're waiting for steel for LACS as well. Um, as South Hill, that's supposed to be delivered this week, and we did hear today from the GC, again, they have the material, they don't have anybody to put it up. So um we're just continually asking that question and trying to get that work scheduled, we do have spaces that are ready and able to have the uh steel put in place if we have the appropriate labor. And Streeter is actually looking at doing some of that installation themselves, we're just not sure if they have a certified welder on their staff that could do that part, that they could stand it and put the bolts in and and potentially do that portion of it, but welding may need a specialist.
Okay, so a quick call to, um, I realized that uh a lot of this labor shortage everywhere, I I. Um, how far away or before this becomes something that we have to maybe have concern?
I think we're already there Sean, um, we are behind schedule because of this.
Yeah.
Um, at both South Hill and LACS, um the spaces are small enough, especially at LACS, once we get the steel in, they've not stopped doing other things that they could do. So we are ahead in that respect, but trying to get, you know, the roof on and the exterior wall in place. The good news is, I I think uh the principal at LACS, you know, she she was very um easy to work with in planning this project, and as long as we can have her front entrance online for her next summer and that impact bus track again for next school year, I I think she would be okay. I haven't approached that subject with her, but just from past experience, I think she's doing well, and Harry's been amazing at South Hill too. Uh, we had already known that he was not going to move into his new space until just before summer break. Um, because we take his others, his current space and renovate it, right, and he wasn't going to move mid-year. So we do have some play there, we don't like to let contractors know that, so we're trying to keep the foot on the pedal to get them to get their work done. Any other questions at LACS before anybody? Okay, DeWitt, um, as L- as with LACS, we are working on trying to get the lights installed. We've had a couple of attempts that didn't go well, uh openings not uh cut correctly, so um, the drywaller's been back trying to remedy that so the electrician can put their lights in. Um, auditorium work continues, sapped installations and electrical roughing for AV and theatrical systems um is ongoing. The, as reported previously, the walkway upgrades um on the east side um will be next spring, we ran out of time this year to get that done before the asphalt plants close as well as the main entrance and exterior canopies will be done next summer.
Cindy, uh, Chris, I'd love to just comment a little bit about um theater space, but the uh the larger construction room, we did a walkthrough um with Daphne Shalulu, who's the director of Fine and Performing Arts. Um, had a lot of discussion about that, the functionality of that space. Um, I think in the, in the original design plans, it was an LGI thinking as well as a theater. I think we really want to ensure and Daphne, you could have commented about ensuring that that is, you know, very much a theater, and so to keep it um in line with other theater spaces, the colors that we choose are really important. And so initially, um, our product was delivered, order delivered, planned for, um, that was a white ceiling and pond console with Daphne. Uh, we're going to be repainting um the grid system and then also um reordering new roofing or ceiling material that is in that like charcoal black, right, Chris, am I summarizing that?
Yes, it's.
So will we repurpose that other, the ceiling tile somewhere else in a future project that's not a theater? Um, but that, so that space then will have that feel um for the theater.
And that will uh also apply to Boynton when we take that.
That's right, we will, we will make sure that that product will be changed.
So did we just not realize that that would be an issue, or did Daphne pointed out after it was already partly done, or what's the?
I I mean, you know Jill, I do think that you've gotten like every little detail reviewed and, you know, kind of initialed and things like this pop up, and so I think this is one of those um aha moments that occurred like, oh wait, right?
Right, it's a theater.
It's 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 primarily a theater, and it, I've never seen a theater that didn't have, you know, a charcoal or black ceiling and um, Chris responded really quickly saying, okay, we will repurpose and we'll repaint, we'll put in a you know, all the paperwork to get the grid painted and it's gonna, you know, these cause these little delays, but if they're worth it, that's when we catch these things, that's why you do these walkthroughs, okay?
And it just happened to be the day she walked through, they were putting the grid up, so she could see it was going to be white.
Right.
You know, and and sometimes, as Amanda said, those things don't become apparent to you if you're not familiar with construction projects to think about that.
That's right.
Until you see it.
And it's funny because we did the imaging, you know, it was all, it was always part of it, and just noticed just a couple days ago.
But at least we know now for Boyd.
Right, so now we can make the change, and and I imagine there will be things that we didn't notice, right? That were unintentionally missed or that when they're, you know, constructed, it's like, oh wait, this is different, and we'll just, we try to be as responsive as we can. This one we were able to to maneuver, I think, in a way that will please everyone.
With the repurposing, this will not be a change order, this will be a change order.
I think that there will be a change order for painting with the metal strips which are white, spraying those black. Um, I guess there's a question about the the black tiles that you plop in there, if we're able to talk through, you know, okay, you already ordered these white ones, you can use them over here, don't order more of them. And just order the black ones instead, so we're working through that piece right now.
That would be our approach, and then you can take the credit for the other ones and that amount of square footage that we don't have to order. Um, any other questions or concerns at this point? Okay, South Hill, uh masonry um has started and the firewall's been completed, which is the wall up against the existing building. And again, as I mentioned, we're waiting for steel delivery, we have areas ready for it. Um, and they're continuing the remainder of the masonry for the new addition as we are proceeding. Interior work, the renovation spaces of the old buildings, they proceeded in there with in-wall roughing and drywall installation, um getting ahead of that. I wouldn't think that they'll get painting or anything like that until the addition offices are ready and they can do it all at once, but they are trying to finish out those spaces as best they can ahead of time.
As someone who comes down ninety-six almost every day at two P M, I'm wondering if we've received feedback from parents and caregivers, I had it, for me it's revolutionary, I don't know if that's the feedback we're getting from parents and caregivers, I mean, it is, it's a game changer.
Thank you, I think we received this.
Is that so?
I mean, it's amazing, that's good.
Yeah, the line would be halfway up ninety-six and then dangerous, and now it's clean and clear, and yeah, it's it's a, would have changed.
Good. Um, a new topic, uh high school, we were not intending to start the toilet rooms for areas H and G until February break. Um, taking one building at a time.
Are we stealing Dan Grimes thunder, talking about that to the school board?
It is my tower.
Sorry.
So about the week, ten days ago, there was um some damage done to one of the toilet rooms in G, actually it was a failure of the wall. Um, yes, the construction in there was questionable, to say the least. All of us that looked at it from the construction side of things were surprised it had stood as long as it had, it was just a freestanding stacked block uh, one block wide up along the side of the door frame. And uh over time it's been weakened and it wasn't tied back or anything, so it's amazing that it had lasted as long as it did. So since we had that, the toilet rooms are going to be closed anyway, we had a conversation with the district and the building leadership. Um, got approval to start immediately on those renovations for area G, um, which is where the wall failure was, so uh, we have completed pre-abatement demolition. And the abatement contractor is actually starting tonight with his containment. Then we'll start updating on the Friday night, Monday is a holiday for them as well, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we hope to get the removals completed by then so we can get our air monitoring done and be able to tear down, um probably not before school returns on January third because it's a holiday again for them on the second, but um we'll be having clean air so the district can feel comfortable letting folks back in the building uh without any situation and concern, and then we can do tear down after hours like we're putting it up. Um, so that said, uh, building leadership also agreed to let us work on those on days for right now unless it becomes too obtrusive and detrimental to instruction. Um, so that's great, because we get better production on day shift than we do on second shift with contractors.
And I I just, I do want to give a shout out to Dan, Dan is taking on all the communication with the staff. He's been the liaison with all of the right people, he's been getting all the information for Cindy to convert that messaging with the communications team. And so, um, you know, Dan is taking all of sort of the anxieties of construction in a, in a school building and helping and supporting all the teachers, so I just wanted to say thank you again for that.
And we're hopeful that we can have area G, if not complete, at a point where like LACS and DeWitt this summer could be usable. Um, with, you know, minor impacts, um, like lighting and fire alarm perhaps. Uh, so that we can take H and February break and repeat the process. If due to material delays, labor shortages, what have you, we don't get as far as we hope to, we will not take H if we can't turn over G. Uh, and we'll wait until April break to take H, which was per schedule.
Um, I remember they, the students were asking me for the number of stall holes or bathrooms.
We had that number, it was thirty-three.
Thirty-three, and that's not out of the, that's well within the norm, I would imagine of, you know, whatever the mandated ratio is of pupils to stalls or bathrooms, right?
Yeah, we did the math on that, part of that was knowing that in this project, we're going to take one of those out of G and without, and then H. Okay, the H and then G.
Yeah.
Uh, and that, yes, the numbers work even with some of those offline.
Yep.
So we have done, we have the plumbing code.
Yep, that's that's helpful, so some of the student concern just about sort of access and having to walk to another building, is it that things get, yes, we were talking about, that's not taken offline one day where we're not expecting it because of damage, or I'm just trying to also understand that this becomes, this has been raised a number of times from students and some faculty.
We sent them that, it's for students, and we identified single stall versus multi-use in color coding. And we sent them that, we sent the map out to uh uh the the school, the Senate, and Emily, um Tracy Arms, she was great. So I, you haven't heard anything since that communication, students.
And I think, you know, the message is positive in that they're, they've been very unhappy with the toilets today being, you know, aged and and broken. Um, and and the message here is positive that we hear you, there was damage, so it gives us an opportunity to take it early, we're not waiting and doing it later, we're going to do it now and and try to get you, you know, four new toilet rooms, turn it back over to you in a short period. Any questions at the phase two, I have one more update on phase three A one. Okay, um, phase three A one is the Enfield roof replacement. We did take proposals um from J and B Installations who did the high school roofs as well as Joe Soul of Syracuse. Um, under the TIPS program, we had asked Apple Roofing, who had done uh South Hill, to also propose, but they were too busy next summer, so they declined. Um, the proposals came in with J and B being significantly less uh base bid as well as alternate pricing for a thirty-year warranty on the roof, which we've been doing at all of the buildings, we've done replacements. Um, significantly less than Joe Soul, uh they were somewhere in the ballpark of um two point two million. Um, and I can't remember Joe Soul's numbers off the top of my head, but they were like seven hundred thousand dollars over our estimate, where J and B was only about two twenty-five, two fifty. So you can see that that they were about five hundred thousand dollars higher. A lot of that we felt after discussing their proposal with them was because of the travel and the subcontractors, they were going to be using from Syracuse, they they, their numbers a little bit for that. Uh, so, as you all know, at the coordinating last week, uh that contract was awarded to J and B. And um we are just waiting for um review and comment from the district's council to issue that contract out to J and B, and then we'll get the supplemental process going and get those those materials ordered in an attempt to not have any delay in that summer.
This upcoming summer or the fall?
This upcoming summer.
Oh, I don't know why I thought it was.
Enfield will be a wreck from top to bottom this summer.
It will be active.
It will be active, that's a very nice way to put it, yeah, and not with full staff. Any questions on that? Chris, you want to pick up the three A two?
Sure, and three point two um is currently, has been submitted to the state, and we're waiting approval for that project. Um, I believe we have the technical reviews, we're just waiting for the final sort of paperwork review. Um, as soon as we get that, we can then go to bid uh for that project, which includes BJM window replacement and masonry repairs and replacement um as well as more work field, uh so if we get that soon, that's one of the three projects that will be happening simultaneously in Enfield this summer. So yeah, that's that's a high level where we stand with that.
And the work at Enfield is the entrance, place some signage, but open and big department lots.
So the the scope of that is that uh that cafeteria, cafeteria and volume there, right? Recladding that, fixing up that canopy, there's some minor uh improvements to like the sidewalk and the curve there, moving around. And then adding another smaller canopy at the visitor entrance over on the other side to sort of make it a little clearer, so it's kind of back in a, in a corner there. But not re
not re.
paving, we're adding a little, where where people cut the corner, add that in, um, the lighting on that parking lot is being done.
This is not all new canopy, you did it, a new canopy and then a refurbishing of the canopy.
Um, so the the ones where the students drop off, that's sort of a refurbishment of that existing canopy, re-cladding it, new sort of materials, repaint it, make it look nicer.
That one is rusting a bit right now.
Yes, yes.
So you can get in there and refurbish that.
Yeah. So we don't plan to rebuild that, I think we're going to rebuild some of the columns because they're really starting to rust out a bit, but we're trying to keep the, basically the same geometry there.
Right.
And then the one over on the visitor's entrance is a.
So something for us just to keep in mind, um, something that Erin had mentioned at our last board meeting about Ithaca High School, the same situation happens at Enfield. Where, and I'm sure a lot of our schools where parents are lining up to pick up their children and lined up right behind the accessible spots. And so I don't know if another school district has solved this, what it looks like, what it can look like. Um, but there's been times where I feel, you know, I can't go anywhere, someone's in their car trying to go somewhere. And we're, you know, we're just trying to create space, and so could be just being, people being more patient, I, as we know, at Pickle Time, that does not happen well. Just something for us to keep in mind as we go through some of these projects, if we can think of, if there is an innovative response.
Well, two solutions, one is staffing, put a, put a person there and say, hey, stop over there, not in front of this spot. Uh, another is create yet a a third drop-off loop that is dedicated to parents, so that's more site work and do you have room and how do you, um, how do you do that, so? Those are the two kind of common, so at at Enfield, that's already been separated out, at least between buses and parents, so that's a good, very good first move.
Yep.
And and at the high school as well, or you have the two ways, so.
Got it.
Um, last thing is uh just a financial update, with the award of the Enfield roof, we have six point six million unallocated dollars left in the project. We still have phase three B one and three B two, which is the high school STEM and H V C. Uh, we're actually in the process with Tetra Tech going through a design development estimate uh and review after the first year, so at the next update, I should be able to have I won't be here for the next one, Travis will be taking the next one for me, uh but the next time that we we talk about budget, I'll be able to let you know if that has moved either way based on the new estimate, I I anticipate it will go down based on the new estimate, because there's been a lot of work developing scope and the design of the STEM in particular that was sort of an idea during schematic is now been flushed out a little bit, so uh just want to keep us all apprised on where we are with that. Any questions?
Can I talk about three B, are we getting there?
Or we can talk about.
Me or just talking about something?
Yeah.
So three B is split into two projects, so we initially conceived of it as one project that would replace all the mechanical controls throughout the high school complex and the, and this building as well. Um, and and steps we do a bunch of other work. As we started the project and we did financial analysis, we realized that our, as we always keep an eye on the dollars, um, that the the maximum cost allowance by the state of New York. Um, it's a five-year rolling number that you need to stay within, it's sort of like, it's a bad analogy, but sort of like a credit card, like you have a limit, the state determines that, and it will, it moves with you in time. And so you spend a bunch in this year, and then. And so you spend a bunch in this year and then it rolls off. And then you have that capacity to spend again. And so that's how the state limits how much work you can be doing in any one time, basically. Kind of keep you on the rails a little bit. You can spend more if you want. That's dollar for dollar. You're not getting aid on that. So we always try to stay within those allowances.
And our building name right now is?
Fifty.
Fifty-six, fifty-eight. I think it's like fifty-eight. I'll get you that number, but that means when I say that number, it means for every dollar that you spend, you get fifty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine. I'll get you that number sent back on that dollar. So that is, that is over, over the course of time, right? So, you know, you spend a million, you get five hundred eighty thousand dollars back. And so it's from a business official standpoint and a steward of taxpayer dollar standpoint. It's always, that's always the goal is to stay within the M C A or the maximum cost allowance per campus. And then plan for that five-year roll-through because each year of that five, it's, things are rolling off, right? Depending on when it happens.
Well, yeah, just depending on when it starts. It's not like every year it's a fifth.
Well, it depends on like if you've done multiple projects.
Okay, great. So when we looked at that and we entered all like, okay, what date did this five-year start ticking? And then, oh, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on this date. Okay, five years from then it'll fall off. Oh, we spent, you know, six million on the spend, you know, we allocated six million on this date. Right? And then five years from that, it'll roll off. So when we looked at that and entered the specific ones to see like, okay, what is the rhythm of our aid? We realized that if we submitted all the work at the high school, when we, when we sort of wanted to, we'd be, we'd be way over.
Sure.
Right? And so we said, all right, how do we stay within that maximum cost allowance? There is a big chunk of money that's rolling off on Halloween of twenty twenty-four. So we said, okay, let's, um, let's try to stay within our cap. Let's split this into two projects and we'll submit the part that stays within that cap. And then we're gonna wait strategically until November one, twenty twenty-four, and then we'll submit this other multimillion dollar chunk of the work at, at the high school. So that rolls off, put immediately put more back on and you get your aid. Okay. So we realized that as we dug into the analysis and we split this apart. I want to be clear that that doing two projects instead of one project is more effort. It's more work for all of us to do. And so there's an additional fee for that. I want to be upfront about that. And we'll be getting you that, that number shortly. Um, but we're doing that to save fifty-eight cents on the dollar of, of, of.
Fourteen million.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, point five eight one is the number, point five eight.
So, I mean, I, I'll get the numbers together. And we, when we did a quick analysis, we're like, okay, it's a no-brainer. Because you're sort of saving, um, a lot more by, by putting that off. And we can't get all the work done in, anyway, in two years. So when we were looking at, we had a great conversation recently about the schedule and this first chunk of three B. Uh, we hope to start in, uh, in the spring, summer of twenty twenty-four. And so we're finishing designing it right now. We're moving into the final stages of the design process and get it to the state in the spring. Takes a half a year for that. We get out in the fall, we bid it, and then the following summer, spring, summer, we start construction. Twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. That's, area E is gonna be, you know, transformed. And you're gonna have lots of transformation around your building with H V C stuff. And then the second chunk of this is gonna, the construction will happen twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So it's a four-year period of all this work happening at the high school. So it's a, I don't know if it's a marathon or a sprint, but it's gonna take some time to get all, there's a lot of work on to get that all done. So I wanted to just get that out there, uh, in terms of.
And as we, we talked at O A C M with this phase two is because we're waiting for the M C As to drop off and we're going in in the fall. We don't expect to get it back until like April, May. Um, that doesn't give us time to get a bid in a good bidding environment. One, we don't think you'll get any, any competition, uh, because everybody's gonna be booked. So who you're gonna get are the smaller, less prepared contractors to take on a project of that size. Um, and like I said, they're booked for the summer. So what we talked about is if we wait until the fall, get through the summer rush, get all of that off their plate. You're like the first one in for the summer of twenty-six to be bidding and get on their calendars and, and in their schedules, right? So, uh, because of that timing, it just really makes sense to wait the summer and bid it in the fall. And so to date, uh, our phases have sort of had overlap, right? Phase one was still going when the roof started. Phase one in the roof are still going when the temperature control started. All of that was still going in phase two started. The summer of twenty-five, the only construction that will be going on is the second year of the first part of three D. So, uh, but it's still substantial amount of work. It's a lot of H V C equipment and the temperature controls. By that point, the STEM area should be getting finished up and just be last minute, final, uh, fit out, equipment installations and things like that. So, um, just wanted to explain that also a little bit, or as to why, from our perspective, that schedule makes sense.
Amanda, I remember when we did the E P C, there was a great chart that showed us the economics was taking place, right? It was like a ten-year chart of now how much we were paying, you know, what was, I presume, or something like this. And I, have I just missed it? Cause I've had that finance.
Well, there is, there's a debt service chart, right? That shows when the aid comes back. Yes, in fact, we just did review that at a finance committee last month when we had Ben Meslona come in and talk about some of the ways that we're gonna be thinking about financing going forward with for the first time, Ithaca considering DASNY loans because of the government rates right now on those versus going out to banking institutions, traditional, um, and we talked through those options. So I can easily share that with you. And then we use that for our budget planning as well. So it actually, we use it for both the revenue coming in in terms of the state aid side. And then also the expenditure for our debt service line. And as you know, when we build our budget, that debt service line, we try to track at seven percent of our total budget. We really sort of made a commitment when we went out with a hundred and twenty million that we want to try to keep that in that seven, seven point five percent range of our total budget amount moving forward. So, so all that, all, everything that we're talking about all plays into that, right? That the, the revenue coming in and then the expenditure on the debt.
And one other thing, um, that we just wanted to make this group aware of, we did talk about it at O A C M, but the temporary trailers that are gonna be required uh, for the first phase for STEM to have a place for classes and maker space during the construction. Uh, we have gotten initial pricing, uh, of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a six-unit complex for a three-year lease. Talking to the teachers and sharing that, that layout with them. Uh, one complex is not adequate. It doesn't give them large enough classrooms. That complex only gives them, it would give them four classrooms, but for ten to twelve students a piece. What they need are classrooms for about twenty. So if we take that complex, we take the divider out, the wall out between the four classrooms, give them two classrooms and a maker space per complex. Then we put a second one and we, we worked with Chris on the survey and tried to place them. Um, and, and over by the I T A building and the quad, brassic quad between Culp and the, the J building. Um, they could be in close proximity to there. So the teachers have sight, uh, line of sight for kids walking from one complex to the other one they're out there. Um, and it's close enough to the buildings that we get services. We're not taking any athletic space away. We're not taking parking away. Um, but it seems to be the best locations for them. So we're still working on that. And we're gonna have to have that figured out for Tetra Tech's submission to S E D on what we're looking at. And I think, I think we probably have enough information with those, um, tentative complex quad kind of, uh, layout. Maybe we need to do a little bit more with that, but I think that's a good start. Um, and we are looking at a second vendor with the same sort of information to see what kind of pricing they can give us. Um, this vendor is a custom manufacturer, so custom extension. We're not, we're not the too, um, excited that they're gonna be able to be less, but, uh, so right now we're looking at about uh, one point five million for temporary classrooms.
I thought it'd just be off the shelf, but it just go. In that conversation, I know our STEM teachers have been entirely involved in the entire process.
And the.
And the students as well. And so for me, the next question is about communication of their involvement. And students that goes out to families and teacher and, and to other folks, right? It's, it's, it's had a pretty big impact on the campus, right? So I, I, I just want to make sure we're communicating that as much as we possibly can or getting out ahead of it, letting people know or whatever it is. Cause the emails come, if people are angry, acting like it was a rash decision, as opposed to something that teachers had asked for or wanted.
We can definitely, I think, Margaret's really the one who's kind of stemming all the Ithaca High School communication. And so I can easily talk to her about that concern. Um, and I want to, I want to say that, that other part of, you know, the S and STEM, we've also been working with the science department as well, lots of meetings with physics teachers and, um, making sure that, you know, their case works right and the, and the layout's right and all that. So we've, it's been much more than just technology. So yes, there's a lot to highlight in this one. You know, I think we've incorporated a lot of stakeholder voices in a lot of this, but this one specifically just the feedback, especially from the students has been really fantastic. So, you know. Uh, one thing that I, I did want to interject, and I know we have, we're tight on time, but, um, just, I wanted to thank Chris too for connecting. Mary and I had probably one of the more uplifting meetings, um, with Dr. Lobak from Cornell University who's, um, all of her, her lifetime work is around, um, engagement of students in the design of their play spaces and their playgrounds for Fall Creek. And so we're gonna be, um, also inviting most likely Beverly J Martin as well to sort of, um, sort of learn from the Fall Creek process because we'd like that playground then maybe to be the next space. Um, and it is all rooted in the voices of young people and their needs. It is student-centric. Um, it is with the teachers as learning partners with the students and the engagement, um, and the planning around that, supporting the architects' drawings, getting feedback on those drawings. It is, I, I, Mary, I don't want to speak for you, but we've, we were walking on like clouds after that meeting.
It's great. And I would, I would add too, because right after that, I got to go to the inclusion leadership council and talk about how playgrounds should be a reflection of our commitment to inclusion. And that Dr. Lobak was her research on sensory needs, yeah, um, fine motor needs, how are they accessible? So it was really inspiring. I just, it was a chill. I was so much fun.
So we will, we will invite, I know many of you, this is hard work, right? And so I am so excited to invite you to that. I, I cannot wait till I get started. We're starting in the new year for plans that will be submitted because we recognize how long this process will take, right? Cause we're gonna make sure we do this.
Well, that's gonna be part of that second chunk I was talking about. So we've got some time to, through the spring and summer and even into the fall to sort of assess, gather information, have, get feedback from the students and all, all, all these pieces that, um, we then will integrate into the setting.
For my poor colleagues, we will be hearing from a group of third graders who are gonna come protest the Fall Creek playground going away, which I'm actively encouraging. I should let folks know that if they want to come read their letters.
Then you can listen to them.
And one idea that a third grader gave to me, which I think is a brilliant idea is, um, even if I understand that you're gonna take my playground away from me, that was their language. Um, can we at least have a celebration to say goodbye to the playground? Which I thought was a phenomenal idea. Um, so I just want to, I'm saying this so we all are aware of it. You can maybe start planning for it, right? So I think they understand that their protest isn't gonna stop, but they also want to encourage, you know, having their voice be heard.
Sure.
But I thought the idea of, of saying goodbye to the playground is, is a very.
Yeah, it's been a massive part of not only the school, but that immediate neighborhood for a long time, you know?
And it is the best playground, highest rated by my F D R. Yes, we, we all think so.
And I agree.
If we don't want to lose that, we don't want this to be deficit ones. We don't want that to be.
And I think they'd be actively encouraged by the fact that they get to participate, whatever is coming next, right? So merchant and two of those would be helpful, but just.
Mary, we're already, Mary and I are doing our, um, discussion through this, right? We're already, we're, it's already planned. We just did it.
I think a suggestion would be to have Dr. Lobak come and maybe address the board because she is very engaging.
Incredible.
And can just put everyone at ease and in all of your communities.
You know, I think that.
Really, and I go have that parent, we're really, we heard that, we're gonna try to get that on.
I thought it's trying to.
I, I think, and do that in a larger form actually because
Yeah, absolutely.
Speed for myself as well as for some other older Fall Creek types. That seems like the new playground and it's rather startling to hear that it's time for that to be replaced because it seems like that was just being designed by children and teachers. And now it's time for it to move on. So.
It was successful. How are we gonna be, how do we, um, involve the community because it is so influenced by the community, not just the school and the students and the staff there, but the wider community of Fall Creek. And, uh, Dr. Lobak's like all on board with, with those communications and surveys and presentations. She's, she's very, it's just, yeah.
Let's get her in.
Yeah.
I'm sure Caitlin would be happy to host them.
Oh yeah, she was on the call as well that night. So she was ecstatic.
Thanks. All right. Who's being right along?
All right. I'll just want to quickly, I, we ran an email, um, loop regarding the greenhouse at DeWitt. And I wanted to, but to do, which kind of, kind of lead with that. Um, we had to talk for the larger bit, some feedback from a former teacher um, with some concerns and, uh, some walkthroughs and, um, I wanted to, um, assure the board that I listened and that the conversations that I've had with the educational leader, the leadership team at DeWitt, that the current greenhouse is perfect for the programming that they are building and have a place for kids. Uh, it's safe, it's accessible, it is everything that they need. And, um, I bring that up only to say like in, in commentary and listening about the Fall Creek playground and even one of the pictures that I'm gonna share. I think that anytime in educational institutions that there's change, there is a natural grieving process, right? There's a, a, a wanting to hold on to what was there because it was so amazing. Um, and then there's an acknowledgement that we're only gonna have the next amazing thing if we make some. And I think it's really important to acknowledge the history of a, of a building and a structure and to also acknowledge and celebrate and make room for, um, a farm-to-table program. And a, and a, you know, a culinary science, like that's, those are exciting things as well. So I wanted to acknowledge the communication and, um.
I, I think the other issue in that, in that former teacher's, um, email, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we want to make sure that we're not losing, um, a resource that money was put into at some point. That if there's some minor fixes that will keep something that we spent money on functional. But if, if you've talked with Carolyn and other folks.
It, it was real done. So, uh, during the COVID break, uh, Tim Malone and Travis Ramsey, she re-did it. It's, it's structurally, it's, it's new and she did, well, it's, it's not all new.
Right.
Um, so purchased it up so that as parts could age out, okay, then we're ready. So what she saw wasn't materials that need to be installed now. What she saw, um, is that they don't need those anymore because of its age. And we wanted to be respectful and keep that. So in order for us to maintain it moving forward, we over, um, over purchased so that as pieces of parts could come apart, we can fix it on the spot. And it was part of programming so that the, the water's good there, the electric's good there, the fans are working, the solid, it's watertight. So it's, it's everything that they, that they were looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was conveyed to Trish, wasn't it?
So that is um.
You'll need to convey it or?
So if I I didn't feel like it was my place to to engage, so I'm I'm sharing with you, um, she, you know, had looked me into the.
Okay, we're cool.
I think that would be fantastic, I appreciate that, thanks. Um, we wanna pop some slides up, I'm gonna, I know Dan's waiting for the ebus and and I owe him a little per per. Oh, okay, um, I I was gonna say, I I owe you for the the high school back in communication, but. So if we wanna slide up to slide five, I think that'd be the best one, and this is short and sweet-ish. Um, and it's a focus uh, this particular month. That as we strive to engage, educate and empower our students, we can only do that by doing the same for our adults. And um, so the the things I wanna talk about today, I'm gonna start with a purple smiling face. Um, and again, that's, that's again acknowledging that that change is difficult and that um. Some things need to be grieved and celebrated, what you're looking at is a collaboration, thank you Cindy so much for. The sawmill, that is the the two inch thick beautiful slabs of white oak. Um, that was a Herculean effort, so that is the, the the trees from LACS.
They've been milled.
They've been milled and they are spaced um, on average for wood to sort of season, it's about. Yeah, there you go, it's it's about a year per inch, so um, when they're ready. They're ready, so again, um, it is difficult to say goodbye to something that is familiar and brings comfort. And then it also, um, that's gonna make room for some amazing. Um, some student work and just to showcase that beautiful wood, so. Um, not super glamorous, but you know, um, all part of that cyclical, part of the evolution. Uh, the lightning bolt at the bottom is we seek to engage, educate and empower our staff, we had a staff meeting before the impending storm. And uh, we start our staff meetings by uh, kind of acknowledging that we are the directors of first impressions for the district. Exterior and interior, and we talked about what do learners need, and we we talked about what do our five year olds need. And there are some giggles, but they, you know, everyone was like, they need dry feet, right? So we we strip the conversations about store prep all the way down, starting with what do kids need, what do adults need? So even this is kind of a boring picture, cloud out. Parking lot, what it really showcases is that we talked about that adults also don't eat piles of snow in their parking spaces. And then we can't have that, that we can't be pushing snow um, onto sides that that delineate where people are to be. So the picture for me reflects some. Attention to detail when they were empowered to decide, how are they gonna move the snow, where are they gonna put it? How are they gonna prep the surfaces and how can we do that in a way that um, makes things better for everyone? This is a significant improvement over, I think, um, what I've experienced in some past snow events. I was really proud of them for coming up with that. The Pac Man sort of left, we're gonna move on. Um, it's difficult to see that the Caroline divider is up in their gin, so Sam. Um, gets a divider, it is uh, Karen Arnold and Sam collaborated to choose the color scheme for this. And you would think that that wouldn't be a big deal, um, just per uh, reference point, I attended kindergarten in Caroline's school. Very little has changed in Caroline's school, so to see, you know, this space looking this this good for kids. Um, and yet it was a collaboration of um, coordinating, when can we get materials to arrive? Two thirds of them showed up on one day. Not on the other. Sam, Karen and I worked together, uh, we had a heads up, they planned for a shift in. In the educational space and now it's it's back together. And um, and again, it's just that collaboration. Um, that that made it come together and then at the top. Um, the the blue circle, the X and the red triangle. Those are some um, some folks, when you talk about engage, educate and power, we had a visitor at the last facilities meeting that shared some concerns about Fall Creek's playground. And they they were valid, and I think that part of the conversation is that even when something meets. Cold or regulation, it still might not make you feel warm and fuzzy for kids. And when we sat with our staff and said. What can we do this, she wasn't wrong. Um, we weren't. Necessarily out of. Doesn't build for kids, at the top in the rain jacket is Kelly Kellerman. He's just a joy, he's a detail guy, and below that, it's difficult to see JD in the, in the cab of the truck, uh, but front and center, Travis Gordonear. Um, we sat with those three and said, what can we do and and Travis uh, had said, hey. We delivered tons of wood chips in August and they're gone because the fiber mat's gone, so. Right, the earth absorbs them, it's very difficult this time of year, he spent hours on the phone calling around to find who's got them. They went and they got them. They dumped them. Kelly wheeled them out by hand. Meanwhile, they formulated a plan to address the broken slide, what can we do, what can we do to make it safe for kids? And I um, I did the Zach Lynn, figure it out. And that was one of the most like it um, empowering catchphrases that I learned when I first came to Ithaca, is that I could just say, figure it out. So um, in a very loving way, I advised Kelly and JD, Travis, figure it out. And make this really good for kids, and they worked um, ridiculous hours for days and um. They felt so good. About what they had done for kids and the kids benefited, that you know, obviously the building is happy. But it was just um, a wonderful example of people pulling together to make things uh, really good for kids and I. I wanna acknowledge too that I come here and I share the wins, uh, we we fall flat also. Uh, but I'm not gonna show you pictures of those. I do acknowledge that they exist, but I just wanted to come here and just celebrate these wins with you. And uh, if you have questions around that, I'm happy to. To listen or to give further detail if you'd like.
The academic in me at some point in time wants to hear about a story, but it's not too, well, not tonight. Um, right, but I also understand that we don't spend enough time celebrating the wins, so I appreciate that. And I'm gonna continue to say, I appreciate um, you giving voice to people's names and showing their photos. Um, oftentimes that does not happen in our space, so. Uh, thank you for the continuing to acknowledge the work of of folks, I I I just really appreciate.
Absolutely. Um, since you've cleared some things from your list, there's another small one that that's that. It came to my attention that there's some concerns about the retaining wall around the kindergarten playground that are northeast. I understand that that's something that's being looked at.
That project is awaiting approval by SED and we hope to get that. Any minute now and get that work done this summer.
That's been sitting there for quite some time.
Is it, is it something that is obviously, I I I'm sure your answer will be no, of course not, but we, it's not something that. We need to worry about causing an emergency while we're waiting for this approval in the summer. Um, I drove by to look at it today and then realized I can't just walk onto school property anymore and go wandering around, so I.
Well, you can, you probably should just check in for.
I I probably, yeah, yes. Yeah, like old badge and.
It does not appear to pose a a danger that it's like gonna fall.
Well, that's exactly what I, great, thank you.
Is it leaning? Yes, leaning.
Okay, but there.
That's why we're.
It's been looked and nobody thinks it's gonna fall.
Our, our own these folks came and did a walkthrough, uh, and did another recent walkthrough, just that. I think we've got all sorts of sets of eyes on it.
Okay, great.
Feeling, I'm I'm feeling comfortable.
And I think the key thing is to respond that we're waiting for.
That it's on the.
We need state approval to make sure we can get it done this summer.
We can bid and then we can move forward, I mean, hurry up and. Aaron.
Um, on a similar note, just to add, um, so we had the Inclusion Leadership Council meeting and it became very clear that there are multiple accessibility issues. And that someone should be representative here at facilities, um, and so for instance, the bus issue at the high school is very much an issue and it's multiple places. And I have a list of things here and I know it's the meeting's over, so I don't wanna like dump, but I wonder if maybe we can have time.
Let's put it on the next, the next agenda.
Perhaps each agenda I can let you know, whatever we bring from that meeting, whatever that we can have a space to. Have some solutions and figure things out from what we're seeing from an accessibility standpoint.
Could I probably make a suggestion that we not wait until the meeting to have the conversations, but send an email, so at least we can. Some of these things we can knock off, I'm sure are already being addressed.
Yeah.
Not saying we shouldn't have time on the agenda, but if you wanna also email those out, because we all may be hearing different things as well.
Besides the board, who should I email?
Dan and myself.
Yeah.
And Mary, is that the inclusion piece of the?
Or Aaron and I apologize, I think Amanda probably had a better idea to be starting in nineteen eighty six with my email. With a Google dot probably is a better way to to do it.
I was gonna use carrier pigeon, so.
Yeah, no, I think it was ninety six, I got the first keyboard, so.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, look at that.